And everyone, I'd like to call the Monday, June 3rd Board of Supervisor meeting to order. Some housekeeping, Mr. Whitson is zooming in on a slow Board Docs day, unfortunately. So anybody from home using Board Docs, it's just slow. But Mr. Whitson is joining us for medical reasons from his house. Mr. Whitson, are you there?
Thank you for accompanying me. This is to Barbara Jones to that table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. The other thing, Mr. Goff is not here today due to personal reasons. And he contacted me on Saturday that Mr. Robinson had said that he would fill in today if Art felt it necessary. And given the agenda and all the work we have to do today, we did. So Mr. Robinson is here if we need legal counsel. All right, I think that's it. Now if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you. All right, first thing, we do have an addendum item. I'm sorry.
It's, addendum item is included on your agenda before you adopt the agenda as presented, you will correctly acknowledge it and any action on that item will require unanimous consent.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
A motion, do I have a second?
For the stake of the record, could you clarify which item is the agenda, is the addendum item, please?
It's, I'm sorry. Item H3, which is a work product provided to you by Mr. Goff regarding open forum public comment procedures.
So you all want to leave that on the agenda?
Yeah, just for discussion, yeah.
Sure.
I will say, it would not hurt my feelings if we carried that over to next month. It just seemed to come on a little fast. While I like a lot that I saw in that, I just wonder if maybe we can use a little more time on that.
Yeah, certainly you have the opportunity to discuss it today and provide some preliminary feedback to Art to incorporate before you see it again, or you can just delay consideration and see it for the first time in July.
I mean, I don't understand the urgency why we would need to work on it today and we have a loaded agenda already. And so my preference would be to delay that agenda item until July, but is that the pleasure of the board?
I think discussion is good because it allows people to hear the discussion before we get into July, but I can go either way.
Yeah, I mean, Art, Mr. Goff is not here, so. Well, then, why wouldn't I do this? I'll withdraw my motion and I'll make another motion to adopt the agenda amended to take out the amendment without H3.
Yeah.
There's a motion to adopt the agenda with no addendum items today, I would second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Whitson, I didn't get your vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Dr. Grimsley is not able to be here with us today. Her written report is attached to Board Docs and it's very possible that we will not be able to review that.
Yep.
So we can't, we're not able to review attachments on Board Docs right now?
Board Docs server is apparently having issues and based on the link is not coming up, so do not have that. I do have a printed copy if anybody would like, and I can read it if you would like.
I think we can just move forward. It's on Board Docs for us to read when Board Docs decides to play nicely again.
Right. And so this is going to be a theme through the day until Board Docs has their...
I did check the speed of our internet and it's flying, so it's definitely not us.
Yeah.
All right, moving into the second presentation, which is the company four monthly report.
Good afternoon. We continue to be plagued by counting problems. For example, our dispatcher's records show nine fire calls with only four responses and made 12 EMS calls with only two responses and two public service calls. But we know that this is inaccurate because the CAD numbers attached to the incidents are not the same as on our paging buses, our works. And so our EMS captain went through bricks for us and came up with the numbers that we have more confidence in. And just by way of isolation, the dispatcher is not going to pick up the ones where we go in our MVA. All of us who are EMRs now have kits, first aid kits in the car with us and we can go on our own if that's closer than the one by the fire station. So she came up with 31 calls, 15 non-responses, 16 responses. There was one transport with 1401's medic and there was one assisted scene and then 1401 transported in there, medic. There were three assists with fires, one assist with a landing zone, three public service responses, and nine times we were placed in service, meaning we started out and then we were sent home because somebody else had gotten there first and had the situation in hand. We have only one person from our nine-member class for EMT take the test so far and he passed, and the rest of us are scheduled for this week and next, I believe. So once we get that done, then we have to go through the clearance process with the chief and we have to be preceptive, we have to be supervised clinically, like what an internal resident. Once that all gets done, we should be able to participate in more transports awareness to... The class is over.
Speaking of.
Speaking of. Turn mine off.
Yeah. No, no, I'm cool for you, yep.
Speaking of, the class is over, it's just the testing at this point, the national registry test. And last month, I'm very pleased to report that we elected a new firefighter, somebody fully qualified, always a good punch for indoor, outdoor, not skyscrapers for this. And let's see, I think that's it. Nothing to report. Can I answer any questions?
So it's one transport?
Yes, but we didn't, the one time that we've used our ambulance, medic, 1400s paramedics with us.
Okay.
So until we got the medics up or the paramedics that can ride us, we really can't do the transports. We can assist when other people go and we take advantage of every opportunity to do that for practice as well as to participate. So I'm sorry, you just can't do the transports yet.
But I guess if there is a basic life support call, once your EMT cadre is available, you could transport the...
Yes.
That type of call, but not a advanced life support call.
Yeah, and do it in the ambulance. What's that?
Yep.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Thank you.
All right, we are now moving into public comment. At this time, anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized, come up to the mic and give us your name and your district, and given the number of people in the room, we'll do five minutes max.
Hi, Dan Yonan, I'm the personal district. I don't know the numbers, I don't have the numbers. So I just wanted to give the board supervisors down to the public a very quick update on the rap tax free project. First time in many years that this is free tax filing in the county. I did a short presentation on this at the December meeting to give everybody a heads up. So, and there are headouts back there with the board supervisors because this also, so you're probably not interested in all the more detail here, but probably the highlights are, we had started 52 returns, we completed 45. The ones we didn't complete were either because as we got into it, we realized they were out of scope, what we were allowed to do, or a taxpayer needed to provide information and they didn't come back with the information. So the only reject we had was a taxpayer that IDed in from the IRS and couldn't remember what it was, so we can't file it if we don't have the ID. Only one taxpayer had previously used free tax filing, so. And we did have a number of queries out to the site closed, we weren't able to accommodate them, so we referred them to other private sites. Anyway, so just some quick numbers, we had 29 taxpayers have refunds, 34,200 and something total, have an average of 1,183 refunds, 16 out taxes, approximately 20,500 and something for cumulative, an average of 1322. And the fees saved, and I realize this might be a little bit confusing the way I put it on here, so in the footnote you'll see, the taxpayers actually told us what they had paid in previous years locally or in the region, had paid anywhere from $60 to $400 to prepare relatively simple returns. The national figures are in the range of 250 to 300, so that's just to explain those figures. The other piece we might be interested in is, good, almost half our taxpayers are seniors and many of these surprisingly did have to pay taxes because of the very big jump in the cost of living increase and a lot of the hedge investments that I was making last year, so plus minus. On the flip side of this, I did a breakout as a code, so you can see, we have a number of people who are actually not rappahannic residents. Some of them were children of rappahannic residents, who can hate to have kids. And then there's some information on outreach and so forth. So again, I'll be happy to answer more questions, but I do want to give a shout out to our volunteers who put in, more than, probably closer to 100 hours actually between the training. So Lillian Taylor, Carly Bearman, Grace Flores Hughes, Mike Rainer, Kathy Reingold, Suzanne Witten Ross, Jeremy Ross, and myself. I'm sorry, Suzanne Witten Ross. Any questions?
You can, it's public comment, but it's public comment, so we don't, it's not a give and take, but thank you very much. That's great information.
Oh, I'm sorry, one other thing, we're really looking for volunteers, we're not sure. So be happy to talk to anybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. It's great numbers.
Anyone else during public comment?
Good afternoon, Chief of Resistor, Hampton District. Every once in a while, I show pictures or stuff, so it's time for me to show this thing again. It's just a reminder, okay, everybody, I just, not you guys, it's just you guys, okay? It's called chaos. I keep it on the shelf, on my bookshelves at the house, and I just wanted to be a reminder, where great dreams begin. Before a grand vision can become a reality, there may be difficulty. Before a person begins a great endeavor, they may encounter chaos. As a new plant breaks the ground with great difficulty, foreshadowing a huge tree, so must we sometimes push against difficulty in bringing forth our dreams. Okay, I think we have been in various phases of chaos. I think we're about to be discussing another one during this particular meeting. I do want to address that when John McCarthy left, there was an interim period of time and Brenda Garten was the administrator for a period of time. She left an exit report that I extremely admired and I wrote about in the newspaper, and in it she gave a recap of what she had accomplished, what still needs to be done. The way she did it was with no criticisms, no blaming or anything like that, it was a very positive way of what can be done in going forward. And I truly admire that specific address, that report that she gave. Now, there were quite a few items on it, and so when Mr. Curry came aboard, I think I've described it not as a plate overflowing, but as a huge plan overflowing of stuff. And Mr. Garten had said that it would take time for a lot of the things that she had listed to be accomplished. So I think during that time, there have been a lot of things accomplished. One I want to mention in particular is Flatwood. I think some people who've been there for a while remember Flatwood. It was a huge horrible mess, awful. And it was Mr. Curry, I believe there were all the supervisors who had a hand in it as well, to research everything that needed to be done. It was a garden project, it took a period of time, it was not something that was just snap, instant gratification. And now the way it's been established, we have the compactor that sold then the trash that is transported away, we pay less money, and so it's been a huge benefit to this county. And I think that's attributed to the county administrator that we have at this point, and I applaud those efforts. The only other thing I want to say is, there have been some discussions on a couple places about appointments that are going to be made, so I'll stick my neck out. Sometimes there are committees where a person has indicated that yes, they'd like to stay. There have been instances, however, where that was not the way it went. One of them was with Ms. Ishi, I believe was on the planning commission, and I think she had indicated that she would stay and she would replace. I think another instance was when something to do with the parks, there was a lady who had accomplished quite a bit for the parks, including writing quite a few grants, and that person was not, did not continue in a position as well. So it's not that, oh, I could, I would like to keep on with it, that this may be a circumstance or a time that it's time for somebody else to step forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheila.
Kelly Taffey on Mr. Whitson's district. It came to my attention last week that there is a new zoning regulation in regards to contractor yards that's being looked at. I had no notice about it or anything like that until I saw it in the newspaper. I contacted several members of the supervisors to make an appointment to find out what this was going on, what was the push behind it, so on and so forth, and unfortunately was unable to do so. It was not available to be read in person until I received it from Mr. Curry on my email. It's nice enough to respond. It's a really large problem for me personally. I've been in court with this board for five years. You've spent over $100,000, I've spent like $60,000, and luckily I just got replenished, so we can go back to court. I don't want to go back to court, that's not my thing. I like to get up, do my work, and do my thing, and be supportive of myself, my family, and my community. There are not enough details available in what this new regulation that you're apparently going to vote on today. I would like to, and there are a whole bunch of other people that I've been in touch with over the last four days or five days that would like to get more information on it and would like to see it put off from tonight to the next meeting at the very least, so we can get some information. As a, for instance, I already hold a permit issued by the county in the building department, paid for, inspected, everything for two acres of a contractor yard. And now this new regulation is going to lead me to 20,000 square feet. I've got a permit, they can't take away my permit because that's going to wind up being in court. It's an awful lot of time, awful lot of money getting to that. So hopefully this will be taken into consideration.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I'm not seeing any other hands in the courtroom for public comment. Anyone online wishing to speak, please raise your Zoom hand.
It's possible that here, the number of people who have connected via Zoom is depressed because many people rely on Board Docs to find that link.
Gotcha. All right, no hands online. I'll go ahead and close public comment.
I'm also on the first today. I'm also on the first today.
Yep. Moving into consent agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Thanks, Anne.
That was a motion.
Thank you, I've got a motion.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, now we're moving on to appointments.
Catch up to you here.
Okay.
Yep. Sorry. As the boards aware from your last meeting, the Rappahannock Emergency Medical Services Council, REMS, has two seats for Rappahannock County. They are currently filled by Jack Atkins, whose term expires on June 7th, and Lisa Palmer, whose term expires on June 5th, 2026. As I noted last time, every other county that has representatives on REMS has a representative representing career interests and a representative representing volunteer interests. It's been my recommendation that the board appoint somebody to represent the career interests, and I made the recommendation that your county staff member do that. At the last meeting, the board asked me to reach out to Mr. Atkins to confirm his interest. As is noted in the agenda, Mr. Atkins said that he has served for more than 20 years and is willing to continue serving, and I understand he's very interested in continuing serving. That's the information before you. The appointment is for a period of three years pursuant to their bylaws, the REMS bylaws.
Thanks, Gary. In light of the facts since last meeting and with Mr. Atkins' dedicated record of service to the county and the glowing recommendations he's received from both his peers on the REMS council and his endorsement unanimously by the association at their last meeting, I would thank Ms. Waters very much for her willingness to serve, and at the same time, I would move to reappoint Jack Atkins to the REMS council.
Ms. Comer, I know he's in your district if you want to...
Yes, and I was going to make a similar motion, so I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second.
If you'd like to make the motion, I'll withdraw my motion.
That's all right.
Sorry.
Let's not make the paperwork hard.
We have a motion and a second, discussion?
I think that that's fine. I would love to have a report from REMS. I've done some research just to kind of figure out what they're doing, and I would love to know what's going on. I believe they have quarterly meetings, is that correct? Is it, what is it? Is it biennial?
I've never received a report from any of our representatives.
So I would like that. Lisa, Ms. Palmer, Mr. Atkins, doesn't really matter, but I think that either to us or the Public Safety Committee, you know, the Public Safety Committee would be a forum where there'd be multiple stakeholders, so that can be completely appropriate to do it there. But I do think that in my sort of period of self-education about what REMS does, one thing I got out of it was that what's really important is the ongoing updates about how to handle medications as municipalities change the way that EMS providers obtain and store them, is that correct?
I think that that's...
The new federal laws coming out soon.
And REMS is critical in that, in disseminating that information, so I think that that would be really, really useful. So however we can do that, that would be...
I think Mr. Stevens has a plan for that. I mean, he's spoken to me about that.
Oh, I just, yeah, yeah, totally. I meant the council meeting, just reporting on what's going on.
The REMS council report is given at the association meeting to members of the association. And I mean, Richie's at the association meeting, so if there's questions, it could always be addressed at the planning or the Public Safety Committee meeting, but I mean...
I agree with, I agree with Mr. Carney. I think if you want to report either at the board supervisors or the Public Safety Committee, I don't think it's a big ask. We give reports from other people we appoint to various boards. So while, while that reporting is going to the association, frankly, there were a couple association meetings recently that we didn't even know about. So I think that it would be worthwhile, especially in light of what Mr. Carney was laid out, given the complexity and challenges surrounding, in particular, the management of pharmaceuticals within our system to get a case back on developments, and especially now that we have a system with some paid providers, county government does have a statement that we probably have a big role in managing a lot of this. So I don't, I don't, I don't think this would preclude anyone from reporting back to the association. I think we're asking for direct reporting to us, and that's reasonable.
I agree with all of that stated, and it's an appointment that we are making, so I would suggest the update be given to us, to this board.
Well, we do have, we do have an emergency services coordinator report every month on our information reports and correspondence. I mean, isn't that the appropriate place to be receiving that information?
I'd like it here.
I mean, it's on our agenda.
Right, right, so...
And we have had, I mean, maybe not during your time, no, I'm saying, we have a vehicle to get this information, it's just a matter of doing it. And while maybe...
You mean like during this agenda item?
Yes, emergency services coordinator report. And while maybe Mr. Stevens hasn't come to address us often, when we had issues in the past with different items that were in flux, say for a long time, it was very painfully the radio system. We did receive regular reports from our emergency services coordinator during our regularly scheduled board meetings. So I mean, we have an agenda item, it's just a matter of using them correctly.
Unfortunately, Mr. Stevens doesn't attend the REMS meetings, so I think it's important that we hear directly from the representatives.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think having us hear it, and Mrs. Comer just said you prefer it to be here instead of the Public Safety Committee, I think that that's absolutely appropriate.
We can just have it then during presentations.
Yeah.
Yep. Do we need a motion?
So I have a motion on the floor to appoint Jack Atkins, I assume basically filling in the language of the agenda, move to appoint Jack Atkins, represent Rappahannock County on the REMS council, board of directors with a term ending June 7th, 2027, and waive all informalities with the appointment process.
That's correct, please do include those details. Thank you.
Is that what Ms. Comer seconded?
Yes.
Great, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 So then we can arrange...
Mr. Whitson?
So then we can just arrange with them, you can arrange with them to have them just present.
I'll certainly let them know what the board expressed, and I don't know that you have subpoena power to compel them to be here, but I suspect that they will want to share information with the board as you've desired.
I think if we get to that point where we have to compel people to do that, something is obviously not communicating.
I guess I said that because I don't think you need to...
We invite them.
I don't think you need to take a vote.
Yeah.
I don't think we've ever had that problem, and I, do I anticipate we'll have that problem on this either?
No. I would just love to know what's going on. It sounds like there's a fast-moving shift on the federal and state level with all kinds of things, and I think Mr. Hill brought this up at the last meeting, that things have changed pretty quickly in terms of getting certified and having, you know, just things are rapidly moving, so. Yeah, okay.
Laurel Ridge community appointment, did we receive?
We did, we did receive...
We did, we did receive, I thought I spoke to, at Board Docs, those appear to be functioning. We did receive an application today. I told you at the last meeting that it was my intention to run an ad in the newspaper announcing the vacancy, and you confirmed that that was your desire with an expected appointment in July. Did receive, requested, or an application today from Ibi Vanderkam. And so that is before you, if you wanted to act, or you can hold that over, and I'll place the notice in the paper for the next two weeks, and then you can make an appointment in July.
Ms. Donahue, Ibi Vanderkam is a constituent of mine, and I think that, well, I know that she would like to be present to answer any questions. I don't know if she's there today or not.
She is, she is here. She is in the room.
I think then, I mean, I think she's an excellent candidate for this position. She works with the Benevolent Fund, she's extremely involved in the community, but at the same time, I recommend that this forum landed on us only today, so I defer to you all as to whether you want to proceed with the appointment. I think she's highly, highly qualified, and would be a great contributor to the college board. But I don't, I don't want to push it through, especially since this landed so late. And I agree with Ms. Vanderkam, either on social note.
Mr. Carney?
So, I'm sorry to get that, has it been noticed?
Has not been noticed yet. And what I told you, I would do it at the end of May, beginning of June for a July appointment, and I haven't done it yet, so I would have it run the next two weeks with a, with the notice saying there would be a July appointment.
I think I'd feel more comfortable, I think Ms. Vanderkam's an excellent applicant. I do think that we have done that before and not noticing it, but it's usually with a reappointment, at least in my short term on this board. I don't know that.
There are certain bodies that your policy authorizes me to go straight to notice before getting direction from the board. This is not one of them, and so at the last meeting, that direction came, it just, it was for a July appointment, so I went to try to hit the right time, so that wasn't too stale.
Yeah, I think we've got a primo candidate in Ms. Vanderkam, and if we want to just wait until July to see if any others express interest, but I do hope that will give her serious consideration when we come to a vote on this.
I know in the past, we've tried not to spend money on advertising that we didn't feel was necessary.
It'd probably be about $400, if I had to guess, two weeks.
I would just echo, she is, we do have an excellent candidate. I happen to know that she's already familiar with Laurel Ridge Community College, but it's probably a good time for me to remind everyone that Laurel Ridge Community College carries my employment. So I would want to make sure that I was not, you know, stepping into anything I should not be. If I need to sit this one out, I will gladly do so.
I don't think you derive any personal interest.
I do not. Nope.
I've heard from some people that they were interested in applying. I don't really know what the harm of advertising is.
If there's a general understanding, there might be others who are interested in applying.
All right, sounds like we're moving on to going ahead and posting it in the paper.
Easy to do.
I think the world of Ibi, but at the same time, I do think that it is, we learned from our last appointee what an important this position this is, and I want to make sure we get it right.
Well, I also think we gave you direction.
Yeah, yes.
And if we do this without doing that, that, that doesn't work.
Yeah, it's not ideal.
We need to notice it, we've already made it clear that we wanted it, so we just need to stick to that, I think. Okay?
Thank you very much for being here.
Thanks, Evie.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. All right, moving into old business. This is the time to call broadband authority to order.
Yes, I don't know, you do have a joint meeting scheduled right now with the Broadband Authority, and if there's any action, unless there's action, it's a. And then I don't know how you want to situate yourselves.
Yeah, I think we should pull up a chair so they can be at the table. You're welcome. So much for that, put a chair down there.
We're all friends, squeeze in.
I haven't been to anybody all day.
All right, at this time, I'd like to call to order the Rappahannock County Broadband Authority. We have everyone in attendance, except Mr. Whitson is at home due to personal reasons, or medical reasons. And hopefully, Board Docs will play.
Yes, it looks like Board Docs is going to cooperate. Do you have?
Agenda.
Blue, blue.
Blue, yeah, we have to differentiate.
Here, I'll leave that, I'll leave.
Stands out.
That's from Brenda. I'll print one of these for you.
And I've called the Broadband Authority to order.
I'm sorry.
Two, even though you're not a megawatt.
We're going to dock your pay. Your Broadband Authority pay.
All right, we need to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson.
All right, moving into selection of officers.
Your, your bylaws state that this will happen at the first meeting of the year, and this is the first meeting of the year.
I will nominate Ms. Donahue for chair. Are we doing this one at a time?
However you'd like, the bylaws don't say you follow Robert's rules, so it should be in some methodical format.
You can do it all, once no one's going to bifurcate it.
Okay, well, I'm going to.
I'm a better man.
I'm going to.
You could just straight up make a motion if you wanted to, probably.
I'll make a motion to elect Ms. Donahue as the chair, Mr. Whitson as vice chair, secretary.
Ms. Jenkins is your current secretary, Janie Jenkins. Ms. Nick is your current treasurer.
Ms. Nick is our treasurer.
And I am your current.
And Mr. Curry is our FOI officer.
Don't forget, Gary's your FOI officer.
Who's the strongest FOI officer in the midnight.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
So let me just make sure I have, the slate would be Donahue chair, Whitson vice chair, Janie Jenkins as secretary, Deborah Nick as treasurer, and Gary Curry as FOI officer. Sure. All right.
All right, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Minutes, thanks to Lieutenant, or Janie Jenkins.
That's right, I think in this capacity, she's just Janie.
Just Janie, yep.
Miss. So there are draft minutes before you. If you recall, this was the last time you met, it was a joint meeting with the board. So these minutes really closely follow the minutes of the board for that meeting. And you can see the information that is available. If there's any questions or comments, we can try to review and modify anything that might need to be modified.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes.
The motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Is that an aye, Mr. Whitson?
It is aye, sorry I'm trying to speak up.
I think you just missed your mic coming off up there.
Okay.
All right, moving into presentations.
I attached to this agenda item, first, the, the link to DHCD's portal that members of the Broadband Authority or Board or public in general can see the progress of the project as reported to the state. And I'll pull that up really quick. If you come here, it is Vadi Dashboard. And encourage you all to do this from time to time. You'll see a GIS map of the county, you'll see that this kind of green color is, is our project. So if you, you can see it extends through multiple counties. Click on that, it should bring up our project. And you can see a report for our project as, based on the reports that have been sent to DHCD. So you can see the planning, execution, and we're in the make-ready, and the whatever color, mustard-colored triangles apparently are pending approval for aerial construction and underground construction. Not started, these other items. So I think it's valuable for you just to be able to be aware that that site is out there.
How did you get to that again?
Well, the easiest way for all of you is to simply use the link that I've dropped into Board Docs, but if you go to DHCD's website and search Revadi, you'll, you'll get there. And just a reminder.
There's a link to that on.
It's right here. Yeah, and Vadi Dashboard. I'm sure if you search Revadi Dashboard, you would also find it. I've also included a copy of one of the reports that the NSVRC sends to the state that I presume eventually is reflected in those, that online dashboard. And so these are sent to us monthly from the NSVRC. It's not very exciting to look at, and it doesn't really include a lot of information. So there are a couple reports that are attached that also don't include a lot of information, and I don't usually get a lot of value out of them. What, we tend to get more value from our quarterly meetings held by NSVRC at All Points with partners, the last couple have been in person, and at the most recent one, All Points shared the attached presentation, you can see that was May 2nd. So hopefully, you've had a chance to review this in advance of the meeting, and I don't, I don't want to present their information. The biggest takeaway is for me, and it is interesting to see, well, one can say, hey, these other counties are much bigger than us. The amount of green you can see relative to some of the other counties, even though Augusta is a much bigger county than we are, the amount of area for the project isn't all that different. Now, Rockingham does look like they have more, Falkir has more, and you see Clark is very similar to us, where they have very little probably Comcast penetration, and the rest is, is this project. Most important out of all of this, I believe, is the schedule, where basically they're telling us that, or was that really? APB anticipates updating the project timeline in the second half of 2024 based on then-current status of make-ready and other dependencies. And essentially, what we have been told by All Points, all the counties involved have been told is that they will be seeking a grant extension from DHCD, as they have done, and you've seen in the press, for Loudon and Culpeper. They do not want to do that until they are very confident of what that extension needs to be. And there was open conversation that the bulk of funding from the state is ARPA money that has a December 2026 expenditure deadline. So unless something were to change on the federal side of things, the outside time limit for any extension to complete the project would be December 2026. We don't know what they will propose, but this is what was intimated, I would say, at the meeting. The make-ready process is, is a big part of what they're telling us is causing delays. And as you're aware, there was a lot of hard work done during the most recent General Assembly session to work on the requirements between the private providers and the utilities and co-ops, and how the process is going to work to upgrade a utility asset to satisfy broadband, and who pays what, and, and how do you, what is the process that the parties need to go through to resolve conflict? And that is all passed and approved by the General Assembly and the governor. And in addition, the state budget includes extra funding specifically for 2022 Vadi projects, which we are within that group. I don't, I asked, and was not clear at this point, what the process will be to seek that additional funding. It would likely be through NSVRC. It may be allocated on some prorated basis out of DHCD, we, I just don't know, I don't think those guidelines are developed yet. So I'm sure we will hear more about that in time.
So you're talking about that $30 million pool?
That's right.
Okay.
And so it should be made available to help it upgrade REC polls, so that they can handle, and other utility providers, but for us, it's all REC, so that they can handle broadband. And this image is the image that is shared often, that the broadband wire needs to have certain separation from the power lines and certain separation from the ground, and, and sometimes those issues can be resolved by moving things around that are already on the pole, putting a new pole in, putting a pole in in the middle of a span, so there's a lot of different ways to resolve that, and that's with the engineering and the make-ready process. And that's theoretically what is happening right now. There's, we're told there's a large backlog statewide, and we're told that REC has committed to reviewing 1,250 poles per month, and are doing that. We were told that they are doing that right now, but not necessarily for our project. They have, there's a lot of counties and projects within the REC footprint. I think REC has 160,000 cooperative members, and so that's a very big cooperative, but we're told they're hitting that pace. We were essentially told that more time-sensitive projects are getting the preference from All Points relative to their submittals to REC right now. I would like us to be first, but it sounds like they're prioritizing projects that have deadlines in advance of ours. Perhaps in time, REC's capacity will increase, and more throughput will be possible time will tell.
The year we entered into this was the year that the large bucket of money was available from the Commonwealth, it was the $700 million.
And that was, that was largely ARPA.
Right, and so what we're talking about really is the, the class before that, so to speak, like the.
Yes.
Northern Neck Project grouping, and, and possibly smaller Vadi projects before that, because it tended to be much smaller amounts of money.
Yes, or it could be one-offs who had, had different contracts, like Culpeper and Loudon. I don't know if they're, that's it, for example, but I know like Hanover and King William, they're in REC territory partially, and they're very active right now, as I understand. So that's what I know about make-ready, is that we have a lot of polls that need to be reviewed, and the last I checked, none of our polls were in the queue to be reviewed.
It was a third of the, of the polls in the county, correct?
I can't.
I think that was the number.
Yeah, we, we talked about some estimates at the last meeting, and, and then I got confused with the math that they were talking about, and so I don't want to repeat any of that. And Jeff may know how many polls they have in the county, but how many are being touched by the project, maybe he knows, maybe he doesn't, I don't know.
That's what I recall from the House Bill 800 discussion earlier.
We can try to gather that. So I did press the point at the quarterly meeting, that I would at least like to understand the sensitivity analysis of 1,250 polls per month, number of months remaining, cadence in, can you get there from here at 1,250 polls per month?
Right.
And so that message was firmly delivered, and awaiting kind of comfort level on.
It was, it was asked, but. It was asked, but it wasn't answered.
Well, it wasn't answered on the spot, so it was asked.
Mr. Ponton was in attendance with a couple of other gentlemen from REC, and one of which, first name is Corey, is the head person now taking the lead on trying to get this pole project completed as quickly as possible.
We're told REC has dedicated staff to this project, to All Points as an interface, to help make that happen. There's a lot of poles, if you imagine, just reviewing 1,250 a month, but you also have to then, some portion of those have to be, something has to happen.
Right.
So that's what we're being told there. I'm not going to talk about the process. It went to a lot of conversation about how this is working with some other pole providers, and it appears that At All Points has some very robust mechanisms for tracking the infrastructure, what needs to be done, what's left to be done, what is in critical path. They showed us that through some screen share type things, that this is all GIS interconnected, so they can see on a GIS map every pole, and it's, you know, they're this color or that color depending on whether they've been submitted or not submitted or approved. And then they can see if there's a whole string of green, but there's a small area of orange, that those orange ones might be a focus of attention to get a certain area all taken care of. So if you saw a dashboard for Rappahanna County, you would see that one had been submitted. Reiterated that, well, it's not necessarily necessary to register to be a part of this program. Individuals who do go to this site that's advertised on the rapbroadband.org, which is appfibre.com, you can check to see that you're in the program, and more importantly, enter your preferred contact information so that when broadband fibre is available at your doorstep, they know who to contact.
I guess.
Otherwise, various other ways of outreach will happen.
What I hear from people is, you know, that they put their information in here, and then other than the postcard they received last fall, they never hear anything.
Yeah.
And that's. The 90 days in advance.
And I understand that, but I just wonder if in light of all the delays, it wouldn't behoove All Points to furnish a quarterly update to the people awaiting the service.
Yeah, I think that what they've told us is that they're very concerned about mismanaging expectations. But I think the Broadband Authority, through rapbroadband.org, can convey some of that information and manage expectations. Until a revised schedule is released, it's hard for us to say much, because we just don't know. So we're hopeful that the next quarterly meeting will receive that, although it was hedged some that it would be the next quarterly meeting or the one after that.
Right. Well, I would just say, I mean, I have had constituents reach out to me, because the Broadband Authority website still reads, "Construction begins April 2023," I think. And so they pinged me to find out what was going on, and like, why aren't things happening? And I just had to explain that there are delays.
And it is my intent that now that we've received this, after today's meeting, that I would work to get this information put up on rapbroadband.org and adjust that schedule the best we can. There was some limited conversation about, what about those locations that are sandwiched between our current wireline provider, Comcast, who meets the speed thresholds, and the Fiber to the Home project? There was this bubble around that Comcast service area. How will they be served? And we were told that all internet service providers will have an opportunity to seek BEAT funding. And that BEAT funding is different than the VADI funding in that it does not, it is not applied for by a local government. It is applied for directly by the ISPs. There is a points-based system wherein a locality, if a locality endorses a particular provider, I think they can pick up some extra points and maybe have a more, a better chance of getting that. And so we were told that this process has happened, it's been delayed, been delays after delay at the federal and state level, and the firm schedule is not yet known for BEAT, but it's coming up soon.
And those are the areas, if I remember correctly, that's like Indigo Lane and some of the areas down in Amesville?
Well, there were, so, yes.
Okay. I'm trying to remember the map.
Yes, however, also, and I don't know the full extent of this, All Points has told us that of the universe of addresses in the VADI program that are slated to be built as part of the initial deployment, there are also some addresses that are, let's say, close or dependent, so tied in with those VADI addresses that they will be built at the same time.
Okay.
And so All Points will just do that because it makes the most sense. And where they can monetize more area, get revenue for bigger areas, they probably will try to get the BEAT funding. The BEAT funding, however, is really confusing because it's doled out by ZIP code tabulation areas. That's how the feds have decided to do it. And so a provider needs to bid on all unserved points in a ZIP code tabulation area. And then certainly, if All Points Fiber has infrastructure planned, then they can leverage that infrastructure. What they've told us is that they have designed the fiber network to serve everybody. And so the number of strands of fiber, and we'll get to the other map in a minute, are sized to serve everybody, not only those in the VADI project or that will be built alongside of the VADI project. So that if they are successful with BEAT funding, then it'll just be a logical extension. And they won't have to go back and rebuild or redo anything they've already planned to do.
Sure. So we have eight ZIP code tabulation areas in our county.
Appears that's correct.
Very, very small one up in Chester Gap.
Yep. Which might have two.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so when, let's just use Comcast, they want to get this BEAT, they've got to apply for the entire.
That's my understanding.
ZIP code tabulation area, which in the case of Chester Gap would be, looks like about 100 square feet.
And, that's good. And if there is no interested voluntary bidder, and that might not be the right word, bidder, then DHCD will then be beating the street to encourage people to build.
Pun intended, beating the street?
Maybe. To serve those areas, and I envision as some sort of reverse bid sort of scenario. So these providers are playing at the, a scenario where they want to capture areas that are unserved, that they can easily serve from their infrastructure. They don't want to be too aggressive, because they know if they don't serve and nobody else serves, then someone's going to come to them and beg them to serve them, probably for more money.
Right.
So it's, I imagine it's a bit of a dance, and we'll see how it goes. But it doesn't involve us, except for somebody might ask us for a letter, or more than one person might ask us for a letter. We don't know, not been contacted by anybody else. And quite frankly, All Points has not asked us for a letter.
Well, I guess my question is, is what's the incentive for Comcast to do this? Right, so presumably, presumably revenue. But if, in a case, we have maybe one, two.
Yeah, yeah, it's probably not worth the headache.
But we would have to then, that would, when letter writing might be appropriate, where we could say, hey Comcast, we have these people, there's one, three households down this, and they can't get it.
There is also, was mentioned, and I don't know if it's in the slides, the.
LECAP.
LECAP, line extension.
Yes, Customer Assistance Program.
That one? Where that's set for one-offs, where, say Comcast has said, yeah, we'd love to serve you, it's $40,000, or whatever, because it's a long way off. They can apply to help subsidize that extension.
Any household with up to $170,000 combined income is eligible for the LECAP program. And it's not deadline-based, it's a rolling program, so people could apply for it now if they're in a Comcast zone, say, and they have the driveway where it's going to cost tens of thousands of dollars to go up, they could apply for that now and get assistance for that now.
And when that first came out, it was very means limited, but they keep expanding the tent to allow more and more people to participate.
Was there any effort to reach out to the people who might be in that situation, let them know of this program? It's kind of obscure.
Also on the DHCD site, and it's not one I don't think has been talked about here very much, but I think more public awareness of that would be very beneficial for the people in that situation.
I have reached out to Comcast and suggested certain areas where they have infrastructure, maybe coming in from both sides of road, Seven Ponds Road, but not in the middle. And they didn't bite. But it's really driven by the customer. But those individuals should be eligible for Fiber to the Home, so, and probably included in the project. So.
The fiber will be built everywhere also. I mean, you'll notice this map doesn't have cutout areas for where there might be existing Comcast service. And they did say in the meeting with the, that the three of us were at, that they are going to build every address, basically, that.
They cannot receive VADI funding for fiber to an area outside of the grant area, but they see infrastructure as valuable, because they have to get from point A to point B anyway. If you're passing a Comcast residence home, then they will likely offer service to them at some point in time, as long as they can keep the accounting clear that VADI is not paying for it.
I was just reflecting that Mr. Fraser, his former predecessor, often talked about people being concerned about that, approaching him with these stories of not being able to get the service that they really want. So I don't know if they, if anyone has spoken with you about that since his reports, but it would be nice for them to know they've got two, possibly two bites of that on.
And it is, the universe of residences that are served by Comcast and not part of the VADI program is not detailed. And it's, it's, it's information's not known, I don't have a list of addresses. I can't just send a letter to all those people. It would take somebody who has the data and a GIS to do magic, I guess. I don't, we don't have those data sets.
Well, and you used to be able to find out, when you would put your address in at the beginning of the intake process, you would get a notification that your address is not part of the project at this time.
Or you're not, or it was an error.
And now you kind of get, thank you for submitting your information. You don't, you don't get a differentiating response to know.
Yeah.
I do remember early on, though, however, it was wrong more than once.
It was.
So people would put their information in and say, you're not here.
Yep.
Oh, sorry, excuse me. You're not eligible for the program.
Right.
And then that person would reach out to me and say, what's going on here? Here's where I live, I live at the bottom of the Thorne River, this is ridiculous, I shouldn't be getting this. And I'd say, yes, I'm sorry, we'll figure it out. And we went back and forth. So, you know, maybe they're having an issue with.
So they're trying to match to a database, behind-the-scenes citizen, perfect.
And maybe they just realized.
One of the issues that All Points had, particularly with our locality.
Just decide to just take it all in and sort it out later.
We didn't, we haven't historically had a very mature GIS system. We haven't historically submitted addressable residence GIS information to the state, which is a requirement. And so the data, the universe of data was not available. That is no longer the case.
The database in the federal for the BEAT program is definitely a different database, and now they've upgraded that database.
They keep upgrading that database, and, which isn't perfect, and people are trying to chase and understand where is-is. And so from a GIS standpoint, and NG91 helped us, forced us through that threshold, that the state does now have all of our address structures. And so the universe of structures is known, but it wasn't known at the time the VADI application was put in, and a lot of assumptions had to be made because our data just wasn't there. So with that said, I've also attached a graphic that shows the, that depicts the design of the system in our community. Myself, Ms. Donahue, Mr. Reinhardt sat in a meeting where All Points Broadband shared their screen of their GIS system and showed us their low-level design. This is not that. This is a.
Low-level means highly detailed, like down to the pole level. It might sound like it's not detailed, but it's all of the details in that.
So All Points has, I said, hey, I want that. I want to share that with the world. And they said, we don't really do that because of the critical infrastructure nature of this. We really do not think it makes sense for everybody on the planet to know exactly where all the equipment is, and I think that makes a lot of sense. And so this graphic, and this is in our infrastructure, I want to make that clear. We are not buying goods. This whole program provides investment to a private party to bring them over the threshold where it makes, where it's commercially viable, where it wouldn't otherwise be commercially viable. All of the infrastructure is theirs and will be theirs into the future. They have made certain representations that they are going to provide a service, but it's more like an economic development project than it is the county buying a good. So yes, we have a vested interest to make sure the performance end of the spectrum and metric is met, but it's not our fiber, they're not our cabinets. And we have, as long as they deliver the service, we really don't have a lot of say in how they deliver the service. So they shared this less detail, less precise map that they felt comfortable sharing, and that I shared with Board of Broadband Authority and Board members, and I will ask to be placed on the broadband website. You can see the three different colors of lines, which are fiber. They don't, it could be confusing, they don't necessarily follow roads. They follow the power, the, you know, electrical utility network. Sometimes they're co-located with roads, many times they are, but other times they're not. Orange is the highest kind of bundle count, and I'll also say, this doesn't include the back hole, big fiber, middle mile, out of the county. That's, that's separate. And so All Points will have to connect to the three black cabinets or network somehow to get data in and out of the county. That's not shown here. So you can see there's a, generally a figure eight of orange, which is their biggest part of their network, kind of the backbone. From that, you can see the red lines, which each of those, each of the colors is a fiber service area. So each fiber service area has an active cabinet, power to that cabinet, et cetera.
I see the black is the hub for that.
For that color. Each one of those black cabinets then connects to red passive cabinets. And they were very clear to say, this could change, you know, when they get, you know, anything could change. We'll go to a red cabinet, which are intended to be passive. And they said, we could end up with more fiber service areas, possibly, and some of these passive cabinets could end up being active cabinets. But this is the design, is what they have. So you can see, orange going to red is the next side, and then from each of those passive cabinets, then you have a series of yellow lines going out. And what you don't see is the next level of lines going from those yellow lines, where there are six port fiber widgets on, like, next to the pole on the wire, where from there, you have smaller count fiber going to individual services. And so that level of detail was shown on the GIS system. And you can see, you can trace it, pole to pole to pole to, you know, an aerial that shows a pole near a house.
There's a fair amount that would also be installed underground, too. It wasn't all completely aerial, so.
I was surprised that the amount that was underground, that's not differentiated on this. And so All Points is having to plan the project best they can, based on the knowledge they have of the pole infrastructure, and how much it's going to cost per mile to upgrade the poles, based on the current pole condition and where they are, and whether it makes more sense to go underground, and that's their responsibility. That's what they're, so you can see, there's a lot of detail here. Areas that were outside the VADI area, and there's a couple. I know this area way down the corner of the county, Amesville, that was left out of the VADI area due to All Points confusion and understanding where Comcast was, but you can see there's bill to that area. And the Smith. But you can see there's build to that area. And Smith mentioned this area in here where Indigo Lane is, and there's, there's infrastructure in that area as well.
So, do the color-coded sections represent how they plan to deploy this or not?
Oh, so who gets first?
Or just so, for instance, when they're in the green area, they do, they stay in the green area, maybe they didn't.
That's their management areas, yes.
Yeah, so if, if you were served, if you're on the line of a purple area and a green area, the, the, the yellow lines are not, are probably not crossing that very much, right? And so it's, maybe not at all, I don't know.
Probably not at all.
Right? So.
There you go.
You're, you're served from one side, and so that whole area is served off that active cabinet.
Because I'm wondering why that orange one goes in and then it comes down basically yancy up to Woodard.
And that's red, right? So that's coming, that's being fed from the black.
As opposed to right here. Is that why they're, is that why they're kind of quarantined?
I can't, I can't tell you, you know, the theory of design for fiber, but I can tell you that this cabinet data is going to and from everywhere in the blue area.
Got it, yeah, totally.
Right?
Yep.
And so from that, that cabinet, it's then going to the world, to somewhere, some data center in Northern Virginia or, or something, and then back and forth. And so if somebody from Old Hollow wanted to email somebody here on 211, that electron is going to go to the black cabinet in the purple. And then some go who knows where, before it gets to the black cabinet in the blue, and then goes up there.
It'll go to Loudon.
Possibly, yeah.
And then it'll come back.
But it's not just going to hop on and go to the orange and hop over. I'm, I'm talking way beyond my capacity here.
Does this not show the REC fiber backbone?
So what we were told previously, and I believe was shared, is that due to an inability of REC in All Points to come to terms on the lease cost for the installed fiber for REC, All Points is not relying on REC's fiber.
But I thought that fiber was mostly underground.
No, REC's fiber is mostly above ground. There's actually a small portion in the county that's above ground, or below ground. That's kind of right near my house.
I've seen other portions that are underground.
Yeah. And, you know, that might change. I don't know. Maybe they'll end up using some of the REC fiber for that back haul. Maybe not. That's a, that's a financial decision that All Points said, we have to install all of the fiber you see here. What does it take to overbuild some of those areas as opposed to leasing fiber from REC? And so they did that cost benefit analysis and decided, you know what, it's better off for just to own our fiber and not have to have a lease cost hanging over us for however many years.
Did they give you a amount of fiber? Did they give you a number?
I think there's been, you mean miles? It's been quoted at times. I'll get it wrong, too. It might be listed in here somewhere.
Yeah, okay.
Should be on the website.
Yeah. It's a notable number, and so, and then, you know, how many strands is it?
Yeah.
A lot of fiber. So a lot of these other counties you saw have just certain, really defined areas of their county have service. Whereas us and Clark were kind of the whole county, except for this kind of skeleton core. Were our counties, from this design, pretty much totally covered by the network, just because we had such poor wired broadband coverage before.
So I guess where the fiber runs first may depend on those whole inspections.
Yeah, so, and they, in, when they shared their screen at the quarterly meeting, they showed us, I think somewhere in Augusta, where they had the different colors and which was approved and cleared and which wasn't, and, and then, and basically showing that. You know, sometimes they want to really press on a certain set of poles because they're in the way of a bunch, but there may be a whole bunch over here that, that's secondary. And that's a whole higher level chest that they're trying to sort out of how to get the poles reviewed in the right order so that they can, they can actually do something. And they then have enough poles in the right area to get a contractor to do it all, rather than do five and then tell them they have to go home for two days and then come back.
Right.
And so they want to bundle in a whole area so they can have a contractor tasked for a long period of time.
Right, 70, 80 miles a day, I think, is what their number is.
So, system-wide, you know, I guess maybe they can do that, but they probably want to do that. They don't want contractors spending half their time bouncing around.
Yeah.
So those are all the things that, because this isn't, it's not our network, it's not our asset, we're not involved in that. And, and it's in All Points' best interest to do it as efficiently as possible. The, the consequence to us is that it might compress the time to the end. So they have as much detailed design and poles approved available before they just really try to blow it out, rather than start early and piecemeal stuff.
Yeah, I saw, I spoke, I think they go for 70 to 80 miles at a time, not obviously at a day.
I think those numbers, we've been told various numbers over time, and it seems that they're getting bigger and bigger.
That's good.
That the contract, I think there's so much demand.
Right.
And so they're all fishing for these contractors and want to, you know, really whet their appetite and keep them interested and say, hey, I've got work for you. Not only do I've worked with you, I've got a year's worth of work for you, and you're going to be busy every day. Those are hypothetical numbers.
Right.
And then REC is involved because they are the ones that are actually going to be replacing poles. So that all has to happen first.
Yeah, just to give you numbers that I didn't have a while ago, there's 4,800 poles in the county. And about 10 to 15% of those, in our experience, get replaced when we review this. So we've got 500 to 700-ish.
Right. So that analysis has to happen first to determine which poles need to be replaced because they're too short or too weak or too whatever. And it might not even be a pole that has fiber on it. It might be the next pole over that is holding that pole up because the way the network works, you see these guy wires and stuff. And so it's not necessarily only the pole that the fiber is on that needs to be touched and analyzed. Those adjacent poles need to be analyzed as well.
And that biggest impact is in these areas that have the biggest cables, in these trunk areas.
Probably.
That would be the biggest issue for them.
And we've heard, I think from REC people, that their assets in our area that were once Allegheny Power maybe are some of their less robust infrastructure.
It was the old power company.
Yeah.
And so.
Really old poles.
At the end of the day, from a power survivability perspective, are, the interests are aligned. New poles serve broadband and electric customers. And will provide more reliable performance from a pole perspective going forward. And that's what the crux of all the general assembly stuff was, within who should pay. And at the end of the day, they said, federal government should pay, and we'll get more upper money. And that was the $30 million. So they'll have to sort out how to apply for it, who gets what, and what's the right amount going forward.
That's what the legislation's spelled out. I mean, a lot of our poles are 50 years or older, and so that's seriously old. That's, that is reaching the end of its service life, for sure. And, I mean, I don't think we'd all be comfortable with the time to replace a pole is when it fails and falls down, maybe starts a fire or just, you know, overwhelms our emergency resources. So hopefully we'll get some more proactive replacement and a better infrastructure out of this.
That's all hypothetical, right?
Yeah.
Not an example of March 20th.
No, it didn't actually happen here.
When you first sent this map out with the comments on it, I responded and said, this is encouraging. It's really a tangible first step. But do we have any way, do we want to, is there any realistic way of assessing the feasibility and the completeness of the more detailed map before the money is spent approving it?
The way the contract's set up is that the low-level design is sent to DHCD, who performs their review to determine if that milestone is met, before releasing DHCD's money. And if and only if DHCD releases their money, would the locality's cost share money be released from NSFRC's account they have set up for us. For this, that's $1.4 million of the $5.9 million of the Rappahannock County money that is largely, that is other people's money. It's, it's Vegas Foundation, PATH Foundation, RCPS, ARPA, and then County ARPA.
It's tax money. It's federal tax money.
Well, some of it is.
Yeah, some of it is.
When DH, DHS?
DHCD.
DHCD, there we go. Reviews it? What reviews?
One thing that I thought was interesting was they actually showed the signatures from the contracting firms that are engaged in this, showing that the work had been done. So they actually have to physically sign something that gets sent.
An engineer somewhere did, you know, design these things, didn't they? Yeah, so.
Isn't viable.
Yeah.
And I just, will reiterate the fact, these are not our assets. We are not buying this fiber. We are not paying for the fiber to be attached to anything. The grant, the state, the various, very generous donations and the ARPA money is subsidizing the project so it becomes commercially viable. And so, yes, we should have a seat at the table, but I think it's not necessarily reasonable to think that we are going to have design control over somebody else's asset.
Or would we hire an engineer to, you know?
And if we did, we, the contracts are set up, whether we like them or not at this point, so that we do not have authority to say, we are not paying unless X, Y, and Z.
Well, I was thinking more in terms of had there been some glaring omission.
Right.
That you would, we would be able to, you, because we live in this county, would be able to identify. So that kind of safeguard mechanism is not really available in the review process.
We did a lot of spot checking in a meeting that the three of us attended, and a lack of having an actual GIS system, Mr. Curry's brain really is the next best thing because he knew exactly where the problems were and the right questions to ask. And without you having seen, it's hard to convey, but seeing the actual pole-for-pole detail was very satisfying and structure for structure. And if a dot was maybe a little off on a property, you know, we questioned that, and they said these things would be revised on a, you know, physically, you know, specific basis as the build-out happens. You know, a lot of times in the building, there's the design plans and there's the as-built drawings that you get once a project's done. So this is like that, just a complicated project where things might change along the way. But they did boil it down to the actual pole, the actual structure, everything in between. It was very nice to see because a tremendous amount of work did go into it. So it's, this doesn't do justice what the true detail of what we saw contains.
I, I understand. And I think what you're saying is you're comfortable with what they presented to us.
And they will, I, I, they offered to arrange other private meetings with Broadband Authority members, if so desired, to share this, but they are not going to share that detail publicly.
I just checked to see if my house is on the map.
Yeah.
One did, was I was happy.
We did a geostational analysis of Mr. Woodson's property because he is, he's a good kind of test case where he's, you know, far off on the end of a road, you know, how do you get there? It was all worked out, you know, this is all, it's not as hard as it sounds for the people who do this every day. So they, they've got the right tools to solve the problem.
So I guess that answered my question, which was prior to May 13th. It seemed like certain people were drawn into the meeting and other people weren't made aware of the meeting. And would there be options to get this information in advance of the meeting in different, in a different mix or at a different time?
Yeah, I think they are willing to arrange additional Zoom or Teams or whatever meetings and share their screen to review the low-level design. Of course, that will be with fewer than two members of any public body. And I can arrange that. For this, they reached out to us during the quarterly meeting and told us that there are four counties that have not gone through the low-level design, Rappahannock, Falkir, Clark, and Warren. And they then said, later in May, you will go through this. And then we got an email saying, hey, here are the, here are some dates next week.
Yes.
And so I said, well, I'm not doing this alone. I'm going to pull in the chair. And then I thought, you know, Mark's, you know, this tech guy, we'll pull him in and let him see. I had no idea what we were going to see.
Well, I'll just say, I, I could have sat in that meeting and it wouldn't have been a FOIA violation, and I would have appreciated the invitation.
You could have.
And the chance to have seen it on the front end. So, I mean, I just hope, lesson learned, that maybe when we have these meetings in the future, that we'll communicate in advance of the meeting so that, certainly we don't want to make them overly cumbersome, but that we do optimize the bodies in the room and that there is a chance for input in advance of the meeting so that people that have questions in advance of the meeting can also have their questions answered, even if they physically cannot be in the room.
I 100% appreciate that, and I think that should be something the Broadband Authority discusses. And if they want to bring others into the mix, then that's perfectly fine with me. But I, I just want to be careful with this proprietary information, and it's, the Broadband Authority has this, these agreements. And you've made certain decisions on whether you want to be on that body, and Miss Bond is the, kind of your proxy in this case. And it doesn't mean that you can't. I just would want to make sure the Broadband Authority is.
Well, we voted on this both as an authority and as a board of supervisors.
I understand. The agreements are between the Broadband Authority and the Regional Commission.
Yeah, I think what Garrett's saying is that it would just be allowing citizens to come in because that would be your role there. It would be not as a member of the Broadband Authority, so it could be theoretically any other citizen. I think is the point. I mean, that's a technical.
I think the Broadband Authority can easily convey to me or whoever that both the Board of Supervisors and the Broadband Authority should be privy to this information, and I'd be happy to send it up.
Then I guess the point I have to make, if we're going to go here, is that not only did I not know as a Board of Supervisors member about this meeting, but also the sort of Piedmont District representative on the Broadband Committee did not know about this meeting as well.
That is correct.
So that is a problem. That is a problem I was hoping to address.
Okay. Well, I did not suggest to the chair that she call a special meeting so that the body could select two of your members to participate in this, in this meeting. I reached out to the chair and suggested that she and Mr. Reinhardt participate, and they did.
I, I was not aware of them either. I had no idea. But I'm okay with that. Now we're talking about.
I didn't know either, and that's fine. I mean, we've got, we've got talented people making contributions here, and I appreciate that. It's good enough for me.
I did have one question about this map, though, specifically. Is, are we limited to, I don't know the difference between the passive and active. Is it literally generation points? I mean, is it not, like, anyway?
Yeah.
Capacity. At the beginning of this project, they were, they said, there will be capacity, but it's Rappahannock. We've looked at your comprehensive plan. Apparently you guys don't want to grow at all, and have it in the past 150 years. So we're not really building, and is that still the concept here?
Well, I can't speak for their design. To the extent that, you know, their goal is to monetize the system, and so they want to be able to do that. An active cabinet needs power, and so that's a vulnerability. So if they think they can serve us with three fiber service areas and the rest can be these passive cab, cabinets, I think we would prefer that.
And that's literally what it means. The passive cabinets do not have power.
That is correct.
That's the difference, yes.
Yeah, that's what it was, okay. So it's not, it's not even a cabinet. They said, in many cases, it's up on the pole.
It's a box.
Yeah, somewhere. Whereas these active cabinets are these cabinets on the ground. We saw one when we toured Richmond County some time ago.
Yes, it was.
So for future expansion, you could have some of these potentially passive cabinets converted to active cabinets.
If you say so.
I mean, it all depends on the strand count, really, is what that comes down to. And this map doesn't show that level of design, the low-level design does show that, but.
Right.
And I did ask because there was one location that had a house and multiple outbuildings. And I'm like, what if somebody wants fiber to the barn? Are you going to have enough fiber to be able to do that? And they said, oh, yeah. It's not like we're pulling one fiber that's only going to be able to take care of that house. That's not the way it works. So they are experiencing, they are looking at us and looking at a road, like you could have a house down that road later. So it's not like they're just saying no to any additional fiber being pulled.
The material cost is the cheap part of all this.
Yeah.
It's, it's the actual, the stringing and the design and the pole analysis and all of that that is the expensive part. And so at the end of the day, I'm sure they're pulling a conservative number of strands because that benefits them long-term to have the most flexibility to. because that benefits them long-term to have the most flexibility to get more revenue.
Did they mention when they start to do this? Are they going to bring material to the county and set it up and then deploy from there? Or?
They didn't say specifically. They have some lay-down areas already purchased or under contract. One is in Warren County. So whether we're serviced from there, there are others in the valley somewhere, but that was the closest one that I, you know.
Mostly it'd probably just be a spool on the back of the truck that came out for the job that was at hand for that time.
So once this planning is approved by DHCD, it'll be a $1.4 million pool automatically?
Well, there's paperwork between All Points and NSVRC.
Right.
Yes, yes. Which I think is 20%, which is a metric. The next doesn't happen until there's actual fiber deployed. And then the next is when actual users are connected.
Yeah, and I guess that's the problem in Culpeper that they're having, is that they're $2 million in because they've completed this stage, but they have no actual construction on the ground.
I don't know.
And it's been that way for quite some time.
I'm not sure their contract is the same as our eight-county regional. It might be very similar, it might be different, I don't know.
That's the way it sounded, that they were $2 million in for planning but hadn't really seen anything, and that's why they're so anxious to get a revised timeline.
Which I think they received recently and have received a VADI extension. I don't think that's very satisfying when you think it's going to be done by July 2025, and it's not. And I think everybody, most people have that same concern that we would all want it done sooner than later, and we would love for July 2025 to be the date. But they have said in their slides that they intend to reschedule, and they have suggested that they will be asking DHCD for an extension. We don't know how long. I just know that it is bounded by December 2026. Cannot go longer than that.
It currently is because that's the federal deadline, but like with the CARES Act money, we had a federal extension for that money as well. Didn't we have like a six-month extension on the CARES Act?
I don't think so. But the feds could definitely change the rules.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I would expect to happen.
I have no idea. Try to predict, I try to predict what you do occasionally, and then I might try to predict what the state does.
I'm sorry, Gary.
And then I totally don't even try to predict what the federal government is going to do.
The political will for this is very strong now. I mean, it's rare you see the feds, the states, the county level all aligned the same way and everyone nearly unanimous on things. So there is a very strong political will for it. It's not like this was just a red herring that had happened.
Yeah.
Four years ago, we had no chance of anything.
That's the one constant, the feds and the state have said everyone's going to have fiber to the home.
Yeah, well, it may be better if they said, we are absolutely never going to extend it down to December 2026.
Right.
We just don't know. So we'll hope that it doesn't ever extend beyond 2026. And all of these dollars will absolutely be spent and invested and be connected before then and well before then.
So, but the next step then are the competition for the $30 million for the additional work. Then I guess that money is, becomes available on July?
July 1, but I don't know that there's any, I don't know that DHCD has figured out what the rules of that game are.
TBD, okay.
And I don't know to the extent to which localities will be involved. They'll automatically go to, because it's constrained to VADI 22, 22 projects.
Right.
So there's a limited universe of projects that can apply, and then it might just be, here's your proportionate share of the 30 million. I don't know.
Right.
It could be, it depends on your poll age. Show me your poll age. I don't know.
And then the other piece to fall into place is the BEAT funding.
BEAT. Out of the entire eight counties, they, All Points did apply for additional VADI money in the next cycle for one area in one county because of its ARDOF status. And it was important, Paige County, I wasn't going to say that, but. Because the active ARDOF area would not have been eligible for the federal BEAT money because it already received ARDOF money, but it was ARDOF money for a lesser standard, which could be overbuilt with the modern standard. We don't have, nowhere else in the entire eight counties had that same situation.
Gotcha.
Any other questions before we move on to treasurer's report? All right, let's move on to treasurer's report.
Do we need to, oh, it's for that, nevermind.
Ms. Nix, internal reports for the last two cycles are here, but more interesting, I think, is, which one was it? It's a report that we get from NSVRC, which shows the amount, the installment amounts that the broadband authority has paid. There are two installments remaining, July 1 and October 1. And then they keep a little tracking table that shows what the current balance is, and that will eventually be 5.9 million plus interest. And then, well, it won't necessarily be that. It depends on when the 1.4 comes out, right? So you'll be able to keep track. And then the bank information is on the attached to kind of back that up.
Is there any development on the interest and if we'll be able to claw that money back? It looks like for the most recent month, that was almost $20,000.
It's a variable number depending on how much money's in the bank.
Right, of course.
And then the interest rate.
That's how interest works.
Yes, and then NSVRC said they were working on some universal processes on how they intended to do that, and they have not finalized that yet. The nature of some of your, of the broadband authority's agreements with the donating entities, I think, will probably affect how the authority handles those dollars if and when they are sent back or credited or whatever. In particular, the Fagus agreement talks about their dollar being the last dollar in.
So it'll go to the Fagus Foundation?
I don't know who is going to.
And the school's got that ESTR money in there too, right? So that'll be very complicated.
That's gone.
Okay.
That's been paid.
Okay.
The last two contributions are Fagus contributions. But we will likely earn interest after our last payment. So it brings up a lot of questions.
See, this is only informational, you don't need approval on them. Okay. All right, open board discussion? All right.
So I mean, I guess judging from the comments around the table, everyone's happy with the way this process is proceeding, this project is proceeding.
I think happy is the wrong word. I think everybody's frustrated, but there's not another option.
I'm not frustrated.
Well, it occurs to me that the longer we wait for this process to be completed, the more the county residents are going to seek out their own alternatives, whether it's Starlink or Piedmont Broadband. And there's been any discussion about that being eroding the possible market share for APB, and they're pointing ones to feel the effect of declining customer base. If, I'm very happy with Starlink, and I think, wow, why should I switch over on getting everything I need this way?
Cheaper and faster.
Yeah, it's cheaper and faster. I do, I do take your point. Sorry, go ahead.
But it's like, it meets my needs, or just, you know, I'm comfortable with the service. Why should I switch over now? Is it?
I would think that that is something All Points probably thinks about a lot.
Yep.
However, I do know and have researched this, that Starlink does not have the capacity to satisfy 2,000 customers in Rappahannock County. Their satellite system cannot do that.
And it will decrease as more people come.
The speed, and so it can't do all, now, Amazon's system is going to come online eventually and, you know.
Piedmont continues to improve its network.
Right, and so it is a market that there is competition for, which is, All Points is going to have to have a sharp pencil and provide appropriate service. If they don't, they won't be able to compete for those services, which that competition, in my mind, is a good thing.
It's a good thing, is that it will prompt APB to be as.
Expedient.
Yep.
I think also the, excuse me, the delivery device, which is fiber, is incredibly robust. So Starlink has latency, and they'll never get rid of that. And Piedmont Broadband, which I have, which is great when it works, the other night when I got my tornado warning and I had to shelter in place with all my children, I had to literally wake them up, and my phone was still working, and we got there, eh, eh. I think this was last week. I don't know why my phone, maybe it was an emergency setting, but I was getting those. The internet was not working, I had power. But when I get weather events, Piedmont Broadband stops. I just, it won't work. And that's fine, that's, it's wireless. I mean, that's just, sometimes it doesn't work. When we get tree branches down or whatever, I just can't get the signal. But for some reason, my phone was picking that up. But I do lose it. So it's the delivery device. Fiber is so robust and figureoutable and fixable that I think that the subsidized rate, which will go up by the CO, what will it go by? Yeah, the Consumer Price Index. It's $59 for set price, and that is way better, more competitive than Starlink. So to your point, I think you're right. Like, if you've already invested the $600 to get Starlink, and then you're paying the $120 per month.
Yes.
Once this comes in, it's $199 to just get set up. I think a lot of people will go for it. But I could be wrong.
Yeah, I would be one to learn. I'll have to go through this agonizing process, oh, it's changed, you know, oh, sort of changed.
And there will be, the most important point of all that, there will be decisions to be made by each potential customer because they do have the opportunity for the $500 connection regardless of how long your tap, your feed line is from the network, for 12 months after it's made available. And if you decide not to do that.
$199.
$199. $199, sorry.
And so you could have it to your.
Yeah, sorry.
So Starlink is yours?
Yeah. So if you choose not to do that, and then you come back at month 13, it will not be that subsidized.
Right. Yes, absolutely.
But those are decisions each customer is going to have to make.
The original NSVRC agreement between the counties and All Points does have a lot of market analysis data. And if you're so inclined to dig through to see that, that was what they were seeing at the time, so it can give you some insight.
Due diligence, it's, the competition had changed since that time.
I mean, I think there, a lot, most people I know have gotten Starlink since then and are very pleased with it. And, I mean, people tell me it's a game changer, it's changed their lives and continues to improve, even people that were originally naysayers, when they see how well it does for their neighbors, they really are, have a very favorable opinion of that product. So, I'm sorry, I wasn't finished speaking. And I guess the most critical point for a lot of people that say had family living far away that needed to FaceTime or, you know, things that were really critical and that human element, is that it's available now. So it's hard to know if people will peel off or not. I guess time will tell.
Mr. Whitson?
I was just going to make a comment about Starlink since I use it. I noticed, but I think you've got some other kind of in your.
I have Xfinity, that's why I moved where I moved, because I worked from home and I needed an Xfinity, a dedicated, a dedicated internet source. So I do indeed have Xfinity Comcast at my home as planned when I moved back.
Go ahead, Mr. Whitson.
Anyway, I'll say this about Starlink. It is expensive. I think my new monthly bill is, I think it's $120 a month. It was $500 on the front end, and given our ongoing struggles with landline service, I would like to be in a position where I was confident enough in Starlink's reliability days today that I could jettison our landline commitment to a great speed. But it's not reliable to that extent. We're uncomfortable getting rid of our landline service. I think, you know, other people maybe, might be less risk averse, but I know for my family, I can't, I can't confidently say that Starlink is going to be my sole communication connection out there. But I definitely view fiber based on what I've learned so far as very, very different. So I just want to say, based on my own direct experience, yeah, is it, is it a good interim solution and maybe a permanent solution for some people? Maybe. But I don't, I don't think it has the stability or reliability that we need looking at a rural area if we're going to rely on something for, you know, emergencies that you make communication.
So a couple of things. I certainly do not want to get into my internet service is better than your internet service discussion, but I too have Starlink. As Mr. Whitson, Supervisor Whitson said, it's $500 upfront, and I have, it's maybe a 25-foot pole on the top of my house with, with the satellite. My options were Piedmont Broadband, who it, they didn't, they couldn't serve me. The other, the satellite we had prior to Starlink was losing, it was not as reliable. We had someone come out, take a look at it, and they said, we can fix this, but you have to take down five trees. So again, I think at the end of the day, this project offers our citizens options, which I think we all want. None of us want, I might, you know, I don't work from home, so I don't need the same thing that Supervisor Smith needs. So I think that we need to keep that in the forefront, is this plan is going to offer our citizens options and a wide range of options. Also, I think we need to keep, to answer Supervisor Smith's original question, are we happy with this? Happy is not the right word. No, I am not dancing around with bells on happy with how this is going. But I do understand that it is a large infrastructure project. I understand, I, it takes us 18 months to build a tiny program at the college, so I can only imagine how long a project like this works. So happy? No. Do I remain patient? Yes. Do I think it's our job to remain diligent? Yes. And that is in part why I chose Mr. Reinhardt here as my proxy for Jackson District because he better understands the technical stuff than I do. So last, yeah, that's how I want to close with, with that. I'm not happy, but I am patient, and I believe it is our job to remain diligent. I've taken the time to speak with supervisors in Falkir County. I spoke with the supervisor, the chair of the board in Paige County just this morning, trying to get a sense of if our partner counties, so to speak, if the other counties in this, this deal were, if they were as frustrated and unhappy as Loudon and Culpeper. And I got this real feeling that they are kind of right where I am, right where we're not happy, but we're patient and we're going to see this through. So that's, yeah, that's where I am. And I do, as I said, I have Starlink, but faster and cheaper will definitely be more attractive to me when it gets here. So it won't hurt my feelings if my house is the first one to get fiber.
All right, if there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the broadband authority.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Sorry, was that Margaret? Margaret, okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye, and you opposed.
Mr. Whitson, I assume you have no objection to adjournment?
I assume you adjourn.
Yes, sir, just did, and I'm going to take a five-minute recess, please.
Thanks, I'll be here.
Penic construction renovation project?
Yes, sir.
There's a, there's a written. There's a, there's a written narrative provided for the board. If you'd like, I can run through that.
Certainly.
Got four different projects listed, first being historical building envelope restoration. Coming up on your agenda here in a minute will be a policy, purchasing policy relative to prequalification of contractors. And so that, we're asking for that because of this project, so that we can prequalify the contractors for masonry and other trades who are experienced with working with very old buildings. And Mr. Whitson, can you hear us, Mr. Whitson?
Again.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So as I shared with you at your last meeting, a revised porch design for the Porter Street side of the jail, the old jail. And so work continues on the prequalification solicitation for masonry and carpentry work for historic buildings, the jail and the church. And this policy will leverage that work. And then once, once that prequalification step is done, then we'll bid out the work to a select pool of contractors. For courthouse building expansions, boards aware, from your earlier, your meeting last month, I've notified the top-ranked offer for your RFP for courthouse architectural and engineering services, and have been working, negotiating with them on an agreement. I'll give you an update on that in closed meeting today. The goal continues to be to head towards having a negotiated agreement for the board's consideration on July 1. The sheriff, EMS and sheriff garage is processing building that will go out back here. Architectural work on that is done and ready. Still working on the site plans to connect sewer and the country, the engineering company I was working with, I think they're backed up. I might have to do that myself. Hopefully not. But the town zoning administrator brought it to the board, and it was authorized to administratively approve the site plan for this project now that the ARB review is done. So that's good. And they waived our fees. Lastly, we have the Leachate Pond to tank conversion at Amosville Closed Landfill. That project is moving along. The tanks have been delivered, and this is, they need to be coded. They've now been coded since I wrote that. But we are having a hard time chasing the pond with our contractor to haul Leachate to Lynchburg because of the rain. Working with our consultant in DQ to permit the dewatering of that pond at the site. Environmental sampling was already done, and it's basically water with a very tiny amount of barium. So, and that's just because of dilution. So I'm expecting that authorization to come any day now. And as soon as that comes, I've still been, have still kept the trucks coming, hedging against this not panning out. That is a cost, but it's a cost that's been built into the budget. And as soon as I get the word, I'll turn them off, and we'll go to town, get the thing dry. The contractor will yank the liner, and a lot of work will happen. So that's an update. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I know that project is one you'll be happy to get off here.
Took forever to get the permitting done.
Yes. All right. New commercial activity. Mr. Whitson?
I really don't have much, other than to say I want to thank Mr. Curry. I've been talking for a while about getting some lines striped in, in the town of Washington to hopefully mitigate some of the redkening that's making it difficult for us to get through the town, given the expanded staff that give up in Little Washington. And to Mr. Curry's credit, he's taken matters of his own hands. And it sounds like we're just going to get it done. From a county standpoint, it would be, it's hopefully quiet approval. But I really, as always, applaud him for finding a way to get things done. And I think it'll help. It's a small step in the right direction. If anybody has been through the town on recent busy days, the parking situation, you know, maybe not Times Square scale, but for a little county, the parking situation. And the town is a problem. And it is, when it gets in the way of folks who are trying to conduct business, farmers and others who are trying to transit the town with trailers, it's not okay. And so I'm committed to continuing to work with the town government on how we make it an easier place for people to travel through. And at least in the near term, appreciate Mr. Curry's help in this room. Thank you.
It was wild. I was through on, must have been the garden tour day, and there were, I heard, like, nine different groups of people on the tour. And so there were guides with paddles with numbers on them, and you had to stay. It was like Times Square. It was like a major operation, major tourism operation. And there were people everywhere, including in the street. So, I mean, we sure have our hands full.
All right. The next one is the Virginia Institute of Government.
Diligence not working.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Well.
That's why paper is good technology.
So far, it's still up on my screen, so.
Yeah, don't refresh.
Yep. So I, this is coming out of the Virginia Institute of Government offsite that we had, and the discussion about a potential meeting to discuss strategic plan, mission vision, trying to get direction from the board as to how, if, how and/or if we want to move forward on a strategic plan, maybe work session. And if so, when, given, I know we've got quite a bit on our agendas recently, so we could put it off until later in the year or, but anyway, looking for guidance from everyone.
I mean, my summer's pretty open in the, but it would need to be in the evenings.
Ms. Comer? If I can call you guys out. What are you thinking on strategic plan meeting? Should we have it is the big question? And then if so, if we do a work session, it sounds like nights would be best?
I would, the summer is fine with me as well. Evenings are fine, with the exception, you know, of a planned vacation in July. But I definitely, I think it would be wise to do it before fall, because in fall, it, life just explodes.
It really does.
It does. You wonderfully hectic, is how you describe it.
Mr. Whitson?
I divert everyone else. I don't have a strong opinion of this. I think that the, the one-day session we had was useful. I think that having a plan going forward, even if it's as simple as a prioritized to-do list, cannot hurt. And I'm willing anyhow to sit down with you all and work on that. I don't know what else to say, really. I think it is something we always talk about and never do. So I, I reluctant to say again what it is, that we can figure out, I think, at some point soon, get together and hash out a plan, for sure.
Okay. Ms. Carney?
It's not, we've got other fish, other fish to fry right now, but
Correct.
I think this year sometime may start.
Sounds like the goal's before fall.
Yep, that's fine with me, if you guys want to get together in an evening session. And I think we should be targeted. I think we should be clear about what it is we're trying to get out of it. We have a lot to do. And so, you know, if it's, I think if it's literally, I mean, I think we should have an agenda. I just think we should be very clear. If we're trying to come up with a vision statement, let's just say that. I want to go in, get it done, come out, you know. The retreat that we did, I felt was useful, because it got us all into a room where we didn't have to take any action, which was really interesting, I thought. But, you know, we just have a lot. We're going over, we're redoing the ordinance, we're doing, you know, the sign ordinance. Of course, we're doing a lot.
Yep.
So that would be my vote, is to, let's keep it focused.
Would it be, I'm sorry. Would they be facilitated means? I really don't see the value of bringing in a facilitator. I think we should just do it ourselves.
We can definitely give it a shot ourselves and see how far we get. I really think if people, if the board will go online and look at the counties in the Commonwealth that have strategic plan, mission vision, we could probably get very good ideas from rural communities that are similar to ours, what we really want to focus on, at least to kick off the conversation.
I think Orange County has a good one. Seems like I looked at theirs at one point.
All right. We'll work on a, I'll work with Mr. Curry on a date, an evening meeting, and give everybody kind of a heads up when it will be, so that you can look at other websites and search out wording that you think would be appropriate for our community.
Might be nice if we structure a series of meetings and keep them short. I just find when you're trying to grapple with large ideas, sometimes fatigue sets in.
Definitely.
And so I can say for me, and I also like to sleep on things, so if it was a Tuesday, Thursday, from say six to nine, and then, you know, take a week off and digest that, and then come back and do maybe a Tuesday, Thursday, six to nine, and cancel anything we don't need, that seems like it would be, you know, digestible bites instead of
A four-hour meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I just want to be productive and targeted.
Absolutely. All right. New business, policy 310.
After about a year and a half of managing the accounts payable process, I have kept coming back to one idea within the payments and invoices policy that I think could be an efficiency gained if the board would choose to move in that direction. And that really is eliminating the sorting of invoices that goes along with having only a mid-month payment and only an end-of-month payment. And the edits that are in your packet, there's a clean packet and a marked-up packet that show the proposed amendments. They don't in any way, it's not intended to minimize transparency, and I don't think does minimize transparency associated with these payments. In fact, I'm advocating for and suggesting within the amendments to this policy, that we actually add a running list in a spreadsheet format or PDF format, or maybe even both, that are sortable, that board members, staff members, the members of the public could sort this list on an ongoing basis for the fiscal year and see every payment that's made through the accounts payable process, not the payable payments, the accounts payable check payments. And so that's really what this policy is about, is trying to allow for better timing of payments. I would suggest every Friday that we have a payment cycle to not only gain the efficiency of eliminating the sorting that goes on with the twice-a-month payment schedule, current payment schedule, but also to allow for better timing of the payments associated with the payment we make. So that's what this is about.
One thing that's become very clear ever since COVID is there's no more 30 days to pay a bill in just about any of my bills, anyway. People are expecting them right away. And the post office is having good days and bad, which has really gotten in the way of some of our payments. And the last thing we want to do is get a reputation of paying late, in my opinion.
Do we have that reputation now?
Now, but we have had situations where the post office has really messed us up on some bills.
I just have to say, I mean, I was here in 2019 when we adopted the current policy. We did what we did for a reason. I think it's fine. I don't know why we would want to change. And I have to say, I would have, I would have wanted staff to talk to us about this before it was written up personally. But it's here now, and the time's been spent. But I think it's important to keep a tight control on things, and I think we have a good-to-be visibility now. It sounds like this is more work, and I don't know what we're getting out of it.
Obviously, from my standpoint, this is actually less work. So it eliminates the constant sorting that's going on with invoices as they're coming in. Is this a mid-month payment, or is it not a mid-month payment that we have to put aside? And then if there are invoices that come in that for one reason or another aren't on the mid-month list and need to be paid because the due date is immediate, then it's a process of writing up, this is, this is why this needs to be paid, sending that to the chair, having the chair review that and say yes or no, we can make this payment now. This would just be, we're paying the bills as they're coming in on a continuous process, and then reporting that information back to the board and the public in the form of check registers that you get now, and then transferring that check register to a sortable file.
So the, so am I, am I correct in understanding that you feel as though this makes your job more efficient and you, with the same level of transparency?
More efficient with a higher level of transparency.
Higher, okay. Well, then I'm going to make a motion to adopt the updated policy 310.
Mr. Whitson has his hand up.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just made a motion.
Yep.
No, go ahead with your motion. I, we, I was, I've been during discussion.
I move to adopt the updated policy 310 is presented.
A second.
A second. Oh, Donna, please, you, a second.
Ms. Comer beat you. We have a motion and a second for the discussion.
Yeah, all I would say is, first of all, thank you, Ms. Jewell, for the initiative. It's a great idea. And Ms. Jewell, I can just ask, am I not correct that when you are sitting on a stack of payables, those payables are mixed bag of payment terms depending on the vendor and what they require, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Right. So just from a normal business perspective, I think I fully understand where this is easier, more efficient, because you're not, you're not having to, and correct if I'm wrong, but it sounds like with a, just a pay-to-bills policy, basically, you're able to pay within the payment terms on invoices as stated by vendors, and you're not having to do the artificial exercise of prioritizing the payments of your payables through this mid-month and end-of-month system. Is that current? It's just a matter of paying the bills when we get them?
Paying the bills when we get them, and still having the recording and the approvals that go along with the existing cycles, just more frequent cycles and less sorting of the invoices.
I do, I do want to add that there is a step that happens before any of this, and that's a validation of the invoice by the, by the buyer, whether it's a department head or whoever it is, to confirm that the good has been received, and the bill is, matches what we expect to pay, and it's coded to the proper general ledger line, and then signed off for and submitted to our office, when at that point, we've already got the good. We've already received the service. We owe the money. And, you know, there's just not a scenario where the checks that are sitting in that accordion folder don't go out. So the goal here is transparency, to make sure everybody knows what is being paid, to whom and how much. And I think we'll be improving that.
To me, this is yet another example of the professionalism that folks like Mr. Curry and Ms. Jewell, and Treasurer Nick and her team, and, and others in county government have brought to bear on our, our day-to-day county work. I mean, I think we're, we're a little county, and we operate, obviously, with very small staff, but we're, we're many, all those folks are performing at a really high business-oriented level. And I think citizens should recognize that we manage our money well, and little adjustments along the way like this, are very thoughtful with adjustments that only demonstrate that we're always that we're always trying to get better. Um, I really am grateful for this initiative. Thank you.
So you all are saying that this system will be impervious to fraud?
No, no system is impervious to fraud.
But you're saying that there are steps before the bills are paid that will be verified before the payment is made?
Absolutely. Every time in your, and the policy speaks to that now and in the future. And, uh, the only step that is removed is that the payment ledger that is on, that it, it will be more detailed than what you see now, where a board member can say, what is this payment for, uh, which happens from time, time to time, we answer that, that step won't occur before the check is sent.
Right. So the checks will be sent before the board members approve the listing like we do every month now, except for the vendors that are on the mid-month list?
There's no longer a mid-month list. But yes, yes, I think that is what you're, what we're saying. Yes. The, the, the process of hold it, printing those checks, putting them in that folder and that binder and not sending them then until tomorrow, uh, will end.
So there will be payment before board review and vote?
For cert, goods and services that have been rendered.
I hope you appreciate that I can support that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Thank you for your efforts.
I believe aye.
Thank you. Policy three forty-three.
I mentioned this, uh, just a little while ago in the construction update. The Virginia Public Procurement Act authorizes public bodies to adopt local purchasing policies, uh, for a number of things. And, uh, one that it does, it allows you to develop small purchasing procedures, and those are codified in your chapter forty-three of your ordinance. It also allows, uh, public bodies, uh, to establish pre-qualification processes for construction projects, uh, uh, if you want to use that process. Your chapter forty-three does not include that. It only includes small purchasing, uh, requirements, and, um, county staff and your consultants think it's very important that the contractors who are eligible to bid on restoring our historic buildings be vetted and, uh, shown to be capable and have a track record of successfully doing similar work in the past. We are not able to do that right now without a policy. Uh, I drafted a policy, which is pretty short, after looking at several other counties and looking at the Code of Virginia. It tracks the, the requirements of the Code of Virginia very carefully on the things that you, we can and cannot screen on, and I shared that with the board, uh, some time ago, and now it's before you here, um, today, uh, for your consideration. So I would ask you to author, to adopt this board policy three forty-three, and I, uh, three series is for finance, and forty-three, I just use that because it's the same as, uh, chapter forty-three hundred and, and, uh, Code of Virginia two-point-two, and then your local chapter forty-three in your ordinance.
I'll make a motion to move to adopt board policy three forty-three purchasing policy. Thank you for doing that.
If a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
If a motion and a second discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Uh, you skipped over the next one.
Yep. All right, going into board committee reports. Recreational facilities authority. You guys are busy. We got a fishing event coming up.
We do have a fishing event coming up, um, on this Saturday.
It is.
This Saturday, free fishing event, uh, which will be fantastic. Uh, it's at the county park, um, so we hope people come. I'm, I'm convinced that, uh, we're gonna have amazing weather, and, uh, it's always been a big hit, so, um, yeah. Come out, everyone.
Excellent.
I think I heard that the mural is almost done.
You, you know, the mural's almost done, there's gonna be an unveiling, and I, and I don't want to incorrectly say when that is, but we are having a meeting, we po, we had to postpone the meeting till the twentieth, but I believe that it's coming up in two weekends. Well, the twenty-second, possibly, so I have said that. I don't know if that's the case, but, um, I think that was the date.
Sounds right to me.
Penciled in a while ago.
And I think I heard that our role of taking the fish down to the stream has been replaced by some very capable deputies, I do believe. I think that's what I heard.
That was a fun job.
Yeah.
Fish splash and jump out.
It was a lot of fun, but been replaced.
I, I can say that, uh, county staff assisted the rec authority with, uh, doing some work in the new bathroom. The floor needed to be replaced, coating.
Right.
And, uh, an exhaust fan was put in to control humidity, and then the hose bib was moved around to the side that worked.
Thank you for doing that.
And they're almost done with the, um, pavilion column replacement project.
Way to go, Ricky.
There's four left, so they're cycling that in as they can.
That's truly incredible.
Mr. Whitson, public safety committee.
Um, we will meet on the twenty-fifth, Jim.
And that meeting was moved because of some important ballgames tomorrow.
That's right, there's actually three, three-state quarterfinal, um, games, uh, tomorrow, two local, one away, so coast sport, baseball or soccer tomorrow at the high school or at the ballgame.
elementary school, right? Yep. It, I assume that information's on the rap, um, school.
I'm sure it's on Facebook.
Facebook, yeah. Uh, planning commission.
We met, and the information is in the zoning administrator's report. Um, I think it is a good result for everyone that the eco-retreat application was withdrawn after that meeting. Um, I will just let, um, my fellow board members know, and I, I hope you are in agreement that the definitions and, uh, Ms. Ritter and I met preliminarily, preliminarily with Mr. Curry and Ms. Summers last week, um, to bring a format to the planning commission to tighten up the definitions of things like country retreats, conference centers, um, and, and really refine those to reflect what's actually been approved in the county and, and get more in tune with where we want those to be. I hope you are all in agreement that, that that's a worthwhile endeavor.
Absolutely.
Totally. That's one of the places that I think that we need the most work is consistency in definitions and clarity.
And we're gonna, we're gonna pull out, uh, half a dozen, probably five to half a dozen definitions and try to make sure they align, and, uh, you know, all of the country retreats or country ends that have been approved have been on, uh, paved roads, so that seems to be a consistency that we can dial in and make that a requirement. Um, things of that nature that are more common sense, and I think the setback was like ten feet for country ends. I mean, it, things really need to be combed through and, um, improved. So, um, I think we'll be able to work through that and, and hopefully set everyone up to succeed, so applicants come in with an application that can be approved.
Good. Uh, fire levy board, I assume, didn't meet?
Yeah, won't meet until the end of, I guess, August, probably.
Okay.
September.
Cheaters reports.
Think there's anything out of ordinary?
No, they're pretty consistent.
Yep.
Uh, let's see. Review of legal matters.
Uh, the narrative is updated. Uh, the Williams, uh, versus Flint Hill, uh, appeal has been docketed for June twenty-fifth. There are three, four or so, five cases, all docketed for three p.m. I don't know whatever they take them or how that works, I believe it's, oh.
Arlington, Frederickburg?
No. Yeah, Arlington, I think. Yeah, Arlington, Virginia. So that, that's linked there. Uh, the four back case has never been served, so it's just kind of sitting there. Uh, Caparucio, uh, this is the Seven Ponds case. Uh, Mr. Dmitri has been compelled by the court to leave the property by June ninth. Um, I received word this morning from Mr. Cornell that, um, the contractor working for Mr. Dmitri's sister, um, the erosion settlement control plan they submitted, uh, to restore the site, uh, was deemed approvable, and they should get their permit, um, within the next couple of days, which is well in advance of June ninth, so that's good. Uh, then lastly, um, you're aware of the case by Mr. Conick on behalf of himself regarding the tourist home, uh, ordinance revision. Um, we discussed the service irregularity last, uh, meeting, that's all been resolved, and responsive, uh, pleadings have been submitted by your legal counsel, and so that's, um, I'm not really sure what happens now.
Okay. Building permits and zoning, anything there?
If you didn't look at the building permit report, um, there's a lot of activity going on.
Really is.
Um, and so the permit value, which is, it's not a real number, but it's what, uh, contractors declare, six million dollars, which is a lot for us. Um, some, you know, relative proportion number, that eventually ends up into assessed value and taxed. Um, but you can see the, um, the number of, uh, homes and the amount of, um, permits and inspections are up, and I referenced in my monthly, or monthly report that, uh, more and more Mr. Jenkins is splitting his time to assist Mr. Cornell with inspections, um, and, uh, trying to be flexible about it, uh, the best we can, uh, so, you know, we just need to keep an eye on that.
You got monthly report or anything there?
No.
Okay.
Uh, well, I will say, uh, Mr. Burke, Walter Burke, you saw him at the secondary road, uh, SSYP public hearing. Uh, Mr. Burke was successfully applied for and received a job out of our area, so he's transitioning away from us.
Aww.
Uh, good for him. It's a nice one, uh, local is promoted, so that's, that's good, and I've found over time that, uh, if you've, if you have capable, um, motivated VDOT employees, they will not be with you long. Uh, they will move up the chain, so good for them, we might see them again, you never know, man, uh, back at the residency in a different, or the district in a different position, so good for him.
All right, matters presented by the board.
I have a couple of things. I, I definitely want, um, to extend condolences to the Kilpatrick family, especially in light of, you know, I think it's, um, suiting, given that the, the Panthers celebrated three teams, um, going to state, track, baseball and soccer, um, so you know, it would have been her, she would have been in her heyday. And she always, something that I shared with a few people, like, I always felt pressure to cheer for my own kid at an event, you know, over, over Sharon. Sharon would, recently, the last time I saw her was, um, my son was running the thirty-two, that's eight laps, and she cheered loud and proud. I finally thought, oh my gosh, I have to, like, I'm the mom, I have to, I have to cheer louder. So, um, that, I just want to make sure that, um, the proper condolences are, are extended and that, um, the community at large really, she will be missed. That was, that one, that one hurt.
Do you have another one, or was that?
It was to point out that the high school had three teams, not just two, go to state, soccer, baseball and track.
Do you know by any chance the times for the games tomorrow? I think I heard five and seven or something like that?
I don't know the times.
You do?
Yeah.
I s, I think I saw they were set, it was five and six.
Five and six.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Ms. Smith.
Um, we had a truck stuck in Sperryville on the bridge this past weekend.
Oh, no.
But only for half an hour, only for half an hour.
On Water Street?
Well, no, it was stuck in a novel way. Um, he was actually on two-eleven and attempted to make the very sharp left turn onto Main Street, which why, if you can actually see it, I don't know why you would try to do it at all. Um, but I guess I've, I've read online that it's Western Express.
Yeah, I just read that.
And the, and the same carrier had a truck stuck on that bridge last week, so, um, guardrails out again. So Gary, I, I know you have a little bit of...
We'll try to contact them. The last company was bankrupt, I don't know who was driving that truck.
And we try to chase down these trails every time something like this happens to see if they can fix their GIS or correct their directions, but I just wanted to let people know that, um, that we do, that we do research this and try to figure out if there's a way to improve the situation, and, uh, Western Express seems to be operating with some bad information.
My past job, we had a similar situation, and it was, you know, my GPS tells me to go this way, and company policy tells me I have to follow this, and so you have to, you have to find the right people to get them to change it.
And they're having a bad day, too.
Yeah.
So, um, and I know that the last time I, I got caught up in one of those, um, early one morning, uh, you know, it was, uh, local deputy at the front of the line leading him off and a state trooper at the back of the line, so I'm sure that they're having a, a real bad day trying to do what they're supposed to do, too. Um, of course, July fourth, it, um, Venu is coming up, if you can make it, and I think, um, Sperryville Fire also has raffle tickets on sale in advance of that event, so, and those are, those are happening. And Marketplace is open, it's great if you haven't been, um, please stop by and see what a lot of local people are doing with a place that was tough to retrofit and looks wonderful. And I just have to echo your sentiment about Sharon. I, I saw her at, um, graduation, and, and ironically enough, she, she crossed, she walked right in front of us, our car, as we were pulling in, and I said to my husband, well, Sharon, Sharon looks really well, it's so good to see her out this evening, and then to get the news that she passed, um, just a few days later, it's nice to know that she was doing what she loved.
Yep, so true. Mr. Carney?
Um, I just want to congratulate, um, Company Five's President John Schwab, who just recently passed his EMT test. Um, that's incredible, I know it's no small feat, and, uh, Chair Donna Hay is about to, uh, go through the gauntlet as well here to do it, but, uh, I just wanted to congratulate him on that, that's, that's remarkable. And I'd like to echo both your sentiments about Sharon Kilpatrick. I've known her basically my whole life, and, uh...
Wow.
That's a tough one. She was, uh, she was an hilarious human being. She had a good sense of humor.
That's...
It's just that they missed.
We, you know, when somebody's missed that much by the entire community, she really meant a lot to the entire community. Mr. Whitson?
Uh, I do not have anything, thank you.
Okay. The only thing I have is Mr. Curry's review is coming up, and I'll be sending out an email with the attachment, um, for his review, uh, to be documented by each of us, and then in the July board meeting, we will, um, have a closed session to review our employee. So please fill out the review, because it, it does matter.
I, one day I'll remember everything I want to say at this point, so I...
I missed everybody.
I apologize. I would be remiss if I also did not mention the Amosville Carnival, like, how crazy in the...
Oh, Lord.
That I forgot that, but, um, yes, it, please, keep your eyes open. It is, um...
It's like the last week in June, I think, right?
It's normally the last week in June, I could look them up.
It's spring for no rain. Last year was so brutal, it was so rainy.
Yep, yes, I know, I walked in the rain. I walked two miles, I know very well. But, um, yeah, come out, bring money, you will, if you have kids, you're going home with a hermit crab or a goldfish.
That's good to know. Bring your cooler.
Yes.
Watch.
All right. Uh, okay, we can move into closed meeting once somebody reads the document. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Bonnie.
You want to do that?
Thanks for doing the math on the bags.
Bag math.
Bag math. I move that the rappahanet county board of supervisors conduct a closed meeting in accordance with section two dot two dash three-seven-one-one dot A of the Code of Virginia for the purposes of, one, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offerors, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract or discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of a public body. That's section two dot two dash three-seven-one-one A twenty-nine. Subject matter of the closed meeting...
matter of the closed meeting will be discussion regarding RFP number 24-001, Architectural and Engineering Services in Support of New or Expanded Rappahannock County Courthouse.
You read that so well. I'll have to second it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote?
Yes, please.
Ms. Comer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
And I also.
All right, Mr. Whitson, I'll have the closed meeting link up for you in just a second.